All right, good evening. I'm here to call to order the first common council meeting for 2019. Today is Thursday, January 3rd at 6:30 PM. Pat, if you're ready, could you please take a roll call for us?
Clark?
Here.
Hendrickson?
Here.
Reed is not here.
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Traxler?
Here.
Thank you. If able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with all state statutes and local ordinances. Next is to approve the agenda. We've got a very short agenda this evening, so if anyone wants to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted...
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? If none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda's approved. Correspondents and Communications, we had one signed up. I talked to JD and he said he would speak at the Committee of the Whole. Was there anyone else present that didn't get a chance to sign up this evening? Seeing none, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have one item, which is the council minutes from December 20th, 2018, which was rescheduled from the 18th. Unless there's any questions on that, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Any discussion on that? If none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda's approved. New business number one, consider and take action on applications for operators licenses for the term of July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2020. There are none listed in the packet. Thank you. Pat's signaling there are none. Onto number two, then. Consider and take action on claims in the amount of $748,999.22. Are there any questions on the claims in the packet? If there are no questions, I'll entertain any action from the council.
Motion to approve the claims.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the city claims in the amount as read. Any discussion on that motion? If none, could we please take a roll call, Pat?
Clark?
Aye.
Hendrickson?
Aye.
Tylin?
Aye.
Traxler?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Onto reporter city officers, then. Patrick, I'll let you go first.
Okay, thank you. Three minutes in. Just a couple things. Following the holidays, DPW will be collecting Christmas trees, so that starts the week of January 7th. We'll go through the month of January. Trees should be placed on the tree border by the Monday of each week, and all lights and decorations should be removed. Those with wreaths, there's a couple of options we can share. Columbia County will collect those in the garbage if they are in a garbage bag. There's a lot of talk about these retail wreaths and trees having some kind of bug that's invasive, and so that's a concern. With that, we will also have a drop-off at DPW for wreaths if people would like to do that. There's a bonfire planned for that. That's one of the recommendations by the state to handle some of these things. So, information on that will be coming out, but I'm sure folks are wondering about the tree collection, so... And second, information went out to the media about the council listening session on December 22nd, 6:00 PM in the annex.
January?
January. What did I say?
December.
Oh, all right. Yeah, no, January.
It's the end of 2018.
Yeah.
Welcome, Trina. We're almost done with the meeting already, so... Happy New Year to everyone. I hope everybody enjoyed the holidays and the break that came along with it. I certainly did. Reminder that next Monday, January 7th, at 12:15 at the Columbus Area Senior Center, following the monthly birthday lunch, there's going to be the first of many future planning discussions for the Columbus Road Map Project 2050. If anyone's interested, feel free to stop by there. Another reminder that there are some openings, open appointments on the boards, committees, and commissions. We have an opening available on the Recreation Advisory Committee. If anyone's interested in that, they can contact me, any council member. Patrick, stop in at City Hall or look on the city website for application there as well. Also, the Municipal Court Ad Hoc Committee, that should have been on the agenda for this evening, I apologize, but we're going to have to take care of that appointment or those appointments at the next meeting. Press release has been issued for that. I still only have one citizen that's contacted me with that, so I'll probably have to appoint two of you to get us going, so that should be at the next regular agenda. Also, people who have filled out the completed papers for city offices, which were due at 5:00 PM yesterday, is Trina Reed, District 2 Alder Person. Michael Clark filed non-candidacy papers for District 3. Ed Johnson has completed paperwork for District 3 Alder Person. Ed Schellen has completed paperwork for the municipal judge position, and I did turn in paperwork to be on the ballot for the second term as mayor as well, so... Also, the deadline for the incumbents to turn in their declaration of candidacy or non-candidacy papers has passed with one incumbent who did not file any papers. That would be Alder Hendrickson. Therefore, a 72-hour extension will be placed until the close of business, January 7th, 2019, so anyone with the exception of the incumbent can file papers to run for District 1 Alder Person. The candidate can circulate papers until Saturday, January 5th, 2019, and all paperwork is due in the clerk's office by 4:30 PM, January 7th. So if anyone has any interest in a District 1 seat, there is still a possibility there. That's all I had. Anyone else have anything up here? All right. I hope we're setting a great precedent as far as the timing of these meetings being the first one of the year. If there's nothing further, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
It's all moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You stand adjourned for a few minutes. Return with the Committee of the Whole meeting shortly. Thank you.
now 6:30, 9:00 PM. I do not think I'll be able to get four minutes done like Mayor Tom was able to on his meeting, but maybe we can get through the roll call by then. All right. Pat, if you could take the roll.
Clark?
Here.
Hendrickson?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
Tylin?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Traxler?
Here.
All right. This meeting was noticed in accordance with state statutes and local ordinances. Next thing I need to do to approve the agenda. I don't have any changes.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
And motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda's approved. Next up, I have citizen comments on agenda items, and we have JD Milburn signed up, so JD, come on up.
Pretty simple. I may be longer in last meeting, but citizens, we just, and council people, we just came from, through the holidays, and a lot of things happened. There were a lot of events, and our unsung heroes always in this are the public employees, because people assume these events just happen, you know, out of a box with a bunch of private people. First, we started out with the holiday parade, and that takes, it takes a village, so we need to thank the public works people, Jenny Schultz, Troy Keigho, Jake Bannest, Bill Kachube, Tim Haug, all the other ones, Carolyn Fredericks, all of them, because you know what? We gotta have those barricades. We have those things to make you safe citizens. In addition, the police department did an awesome job. They, you know, blocked off the highway, so we gotta thank, you know, Dennis Weiner, Matt Schultz, Kelly Towne, and all the others. It doesn't happen without the fire department, because I guess they drive this year. You may not know, but Kevin Weisensel has driven the ladder truck for almost 25 to 30 years for that Christmas holiday parade. This year, we had a couple trucks, which I was kind of excited about, because we had someone else bring another one, so that was kind of nice. The public library, they helped speak, they helped with the tree, and Amy Jo from the rec department makes that pixie dust, you know, so look, people, events always take the public. So then, from there, we moved on to this Saturday event, which was the Stop Shop and Sip, also known as the Wine Walk. That doesn't just happen in a barrel. There was a lot of work that went behind that. The city was involved. Pat Gable did all kinds of work on that, and of course, the police department made sure and checked to make sure that people were the right age and, you know, that there was nothing illegal going on. So we gotta thank those people. The theme I'm getting at here is that in order to do things, to make your citizens, to make your community, to make quality of life, it always takes the public, okay? And they're unsung heroes. After that, we had this holiday train thing that comes through with CP Rail. You know, that takes, I still remember the first Friday when I was kind of being thrown under the bus, because no one was there except for me and two police officers. It's a very well-organized event. The police department did a great job in getting the street closings with the state. The senior center provided Santa. The library assisted Santa. You know, we had the warm-up for the event, and DPW took care of all that signage and safety, and recreation did the fire barrels. Now, in all this time during this holiday, it always takes a public-private partnership. It's easy to complain about the city and that I pay too much in taxes and this and that, but I'm going to tell you, you get some services, and you need to say thank you to these people, and that's really why I'm here tonight. So I want to thank all of you in the council and the rest of you, and so that's why I was here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, JD. We appreciate that. All right. Next up, I have department reports, written only, for LifeStar, Senior Center, Police Report, and Fire, Police Department and Fire Departments, all for November of 2018. Any questions or comments on the department reports? All right. Next up, number six, Board Committees and Commission Reports. We had Senior Center Minutes, Cable Commission Minutes, and Columbus Water and Light Minutes. Any questions or comments on those? All right. CNN, none. Next thing up, we have number seven, Review and Consider Bids and Recommendation for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Sludge Holding Tank Aeration Blower Replacement. Jason is here to tell us about that.
Well, Happy New Year, Council, and appreciate you having me up for this agenda item. I know this was on the postponed meeting, so you've probably had this for a little bit of time to look at. One of the things that I wanted to point out here is if you look at the bid results, that the city has been very fortunate in 2018, and this was still obviously part of that. They have some very good bids, and, you know, again, having this amount of six bidders with, what do we have here, four of them within about $7,000 on $100,000 projects, so again, very competitive. You, I think, as a city, have drawn interest from contractors that want to work with you, and I don't say that lightly, because I don't see that in all communities, so I think these were very great bids. Again, I know we had some great bids on our sewer project this year, and I think that just goes to show your willingness to do projects. So, kind of to jump back to the bids, the low bidder here that we're recommending is J.F. Ahern Company, a very qualified bidder that does this work often and has done projects at the wastewater treatment plant. I want to talk about the numbers for just a minute. The original capital improvement project bid for this project was $230,000. Now, the bids came in just under $100,000, so the question is why? After the design went in and we reviewed the plan, the idea was to replace a bunch of the air piping, and we determined that that was actually after evaluation in pretty good condition, so it significantly scaled back the cost of the project. So even though you've had this capital budget that you've been kind of tracking along at $230,000, we compiled the design, which is smaller scope, which obviously is where you see the numbers come in. Our estimate for this project was $100,000. So, I mean, just kind of a, just pulling out a number, so you can see we're right in the ballpark here. So again, I think they were very good bids, but I just wanted you to understand that there was a higher budget originally in the capital plan to come in much lower, just because of a design change more than anything. But that's the good news, and what was determined to be in good shape, that we thought we might need replacement certainly will last. So, at this point, we're looking to make that recommendation to move forward with the contracts for procuring the work for the sludge holding and aeration blower replacement. So I guess with that, is there any questions on the project or the bids?
I have one question just to ask. The sludge holding tank aeration blower, is that for the outdoor ponds, do you know, Jason, or is this for a different area? Because I know we had replaced some blowers about five years ago and gotten some grant money for those blower replacements. Is this a different set, or...
Right, exactly. So that was obviously the blowers that we're associated with, and I think we replaced some diffusers in the tanks, and at that time, there was some piping. It was the exterior piping, and that we actively replaced to above ground, so...
Okay. All right. Thanks.
All right. Any more questions for Jason? All right, so what I'm seeing here is, you know, they're recommending J.F. Ahern Company for $98,400. Everybody comfortable moving that one forward? All right. Thanks, Jason. If you can stay right there, it looks like. Next up, I have number eight, update on Hall Road Project Closeout and Change Order.
All right, so this particular one is what we would call a closeout change order. So at the end of the project, we look to basically balance the unit price items at the end, and I know we did this for a closeout change order just recently on South Water Street as well. So, Hall Road, we accomplished that, and with this one, with South Water, we had a decrease in cost. With this one, there was an increase in cost, and I kind of want to go through, since there were several unit price items that were higher and some lower, I guess I want to kind of, I'm not going to go through each individual item. If you have a question, you can ask me about it, but I'll kind of just generalize the highlights of what this one is. So essentially, the project is done, so there's no more work to be done out there, so there's no more costs coming, there's no more changes to prices. And so essentially, what this change order is, is an increase of about $25,000 on a half a million, $454,000 contract. There was about $5,000 of that $25,000 that was associated with additional striping on the roadway, and that was kind of a requirement from the DNR after the project was bid. Because of the transition lanes out there, we needed more of a crosshatch pattern. If you've been out there, you know there's a big lane shift there, and there's a continuation of the crosshatch from what was there. So there was just a little more paint, and that really didn't come about until after we got into getting ready to do the painting, and the DOT came back and looked at it, and we had some conflicts, so we had to change some painting and extend some painting out there and grind some more painting off. So that's about $5,000 of the $20,000. It's something that obviously was required. It's something that had to be done, and it was something, obviously, that got approved, but I guess got overlooked at that point, that nobody had caught it until we got into the process of actually doing the work. So that's about $5,000. The rest of the change order items, kind of plus and minus balance out. The other exception that's high here is the restoration. And so, when the final quantities for restoration came in, if you've been out there, there's a lot of EMAT, there's a lot of restoration that was redone out there. We went out and took a look at it. The total cost of additional restoration originally was about $40,000, and we kind of panicked a little bit on the engineering side, went, well, wait a minute, how are we so far over? So we went out and did some measurement, and we reevaluated with the contractor and determined that they actually did some restoration in areas that they weren't required to or not supposed to be doing. And so, because they didn't have authorization to do that, we negotiated that cost back down to about $20,000, so about 50% of the cost. We kind of felt like it was something that wasn't authorized, it wasn't direction given by us, it wasn't direction given by the city. So we talked to the contractor, and they reluctantly but went along with putting together these numbers and bringing this forward as a change order. They did want some extra consideration for the restoration, because the one thing that this contractor did on site was they had a very low unit price for importing fill. We had to bring in fill to build the road up, and their cost was very low. Well, in order to do that, they basically borrowed it out of the hillside by Fromm and just transported it down to the new site, and that way they could keep the cost significantly lower. What happened was they disturbed a larger area and needed more restoration. So we kind of looked at that and ultimately said, if the fill was imported, there would have been less restoration costs, but the cost to import the fill was significantly higher than if we would have borrowed it on-site and did the restoration. So because of that, we're recommending that we consider the $20,000 for the restoration, because if we would have originally done the import fill, we would have been looking at about a $32,000 cost if we would have imported it based on the next low bidder and the other bidders that had, you know, bid this. So we looked at that and said, well, we increased the project cost by $20,000 for doing the on-site restoration because of the on-site borrow, but if we would have had to import it, and we looked at the unit prices, and, you know, we wouldn't have had to pay the extra $20,000, but we would have had about $32,000 extra cost for the import. So, we looked at that and said, well, it wasn't that we authorized it, but at the end of the day, we realized that there was still a cost savings to the city to use that site, that fill on-site, and to do the extra restoration in addition to that. So based on that, that was about $20,000 extra. So that made up about the $25,000 change order value. Again, there's some other items that factored in here that were either over or under budget, but they kind of canceled each other out. So those were kind of the two big drivers in this change order that added up. I talked to Kim a little bit about the budget, and certainly the funds are available, because we borrowed the funds based on the original estimates, and the bids came in significantly lower, so again, that the funds are available out there. The addition of the change order brings about a 4% to 5% increase in contract, which in our industry, a change order on a project usually ranges anywhere from 5% to 10%, if you have them. So again, we felt like it was appropriately within an acceptable range. So it is something that we wanted to bring forward and kind of get some feedback. I wanted to let you kind of know the backstory and the fact that we've already negotiated some of those costs down with the contractor, and looked at the comparisons and decided, you know, that if we would have done a different approach, it certainly would have probably cost the city more in the long run, so... I guess with that, is there any questions on the change order or the process or the costs?
With this change order, will this be the final payout in the closeout of this project?
Exactly. This is the closeout change order, and you can see in the packet, they've actually signed this. So they've actually approved this negotiation that we came up with. So what we would propose on doing is, once this would be approved, they've already requested payment, basically, 100% of the original approved contract amount, so their last request would just be for the additional change order amount that you'd be approving tonight. Once we finalize that, we can then file for our reimbursement to the state for our T-grant and get our money that we have pending there, and I think our reimbursement was $150,000?
$185,000.
$185,000. So that is kind of pending on just getting this project kind of wrapped up. We really only want to do one reimbursement request at this point, because we're at the end of the job, so we didn't figure it paid to make a reimbursement request, because they won't give us all of it until we close out the total project payment with the contractor. So if we can finalize this change order, and then we can just roll it into the T-grant reimbursement, so...
Okay. Any other questions for Jason? Okay. We good moving this forward, the additional funds?
All right, thank you. I wish I had better news, but we'll get it going.
It sounds like in the end, we would have saved a little money.
Yeah, I still think the city came out okay, even with a slight increase.
Would have had to do the, bring it in. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Excuse me. Next up, I have number nine, update on downtown beautification task force. I am Matt Schreiber here to give an update.
Good evening. Hopefully, everybody had a good Christmas and New Years, and I know I enjoyed my time off as well, as the mayor did, so I'm here to give an update on the task force. Last I was here was November, or November, September 4th. I've missed the last couple task force meetings because of a variety of issues, but I was at the meeting on December 13th, and I don't anticipate missing any meetings moving forward, and this will be a regular update from me to the council. Just a quick update, what's going on. You may or may not be aware that the HLPC had received a $10,000 donation from Bob and Janet Gro. That was specifically for the banners. Because of that donation, we have made the banners a priority. One of the ideas that we have had that we've, that we've put out there is that having an art contest to basically pick out the designs that would go on the banners. And in the packets, you can see the rules that we have designed for the contest. So right now, just briefly going over everything, we anticipate 35 light poles in the downtown area can support the banners. We have the specs for the poles from Eric Anthony from Water and Light. I've received bids from a couple, like just very preliminary bids, just to get an idea, just to make sure that the money that has been donated would cover the costs. And the preliminary bids I've received from three different companies basically range from $4,500 to $8,000. And in there, I have a variety of different, and that includes the price of the bracket as well as the price of the material. And it has a range of more durable, the less durable. The things we're learning is that the vinyl banners are going to look better, but you might have to replace them more often, so we need to have that final discussion and make sure we have that before we move anything final forward. But right now, certainly, the budget that we have is the prices that we received have been, I guess, right in line with the budget, and actually, there's more than enough money to cover what our needs will be. So, one of the things that JT, JT was at the meeting in, I want to say it was November, and not this meeting, but the task force meeting, and as a result of that, he put the contest live on our webpage for a couple days, and then we thought it was best to obviously remove that and come to the council and make sure they're aware of this. So what we're asking the council, and then we'll put this on the next agenda for the committee or the next council agenda, is to essentially approve the contest moving forward, that we can put it on our website to take submissions, and the submissions would come directly to me, and then, as you can see in the contest rules, that the beautification task force would be evaluating and selecting them, and then obviously, we would be putting more feedback than just to the task force. And just for everybody's information, the next task force meeting is January 10th at 6:00 PM. I would like to say that there are, let's see, three people back there that have been very active in going to the task force meetings, Carolyn and JD and Rich, and Trina's been very active as well. So, with that, that's really the status for the banners. The one other thing I want to discuss is Liz's comments from the December meeting. That was something that came up during one of the meetings. The issue was removal of snow on the sidewalks. And after doing some research and talking with her and the stats she provided with, when we have to go out and remove snow for people, like, the city loses money. It made me realize that that's probably at least grounds for discussion on upping the fee to basically deter people from not removing their snow. So I'm open for any discussion on either the snow or the banners at this point.
I have a question on the banners.
Sure.
Beyond the initial purchase of the banners and the brackets, how do you plan on maintaining the banners in the future, as far as maintenance and replacement of brackets and more banners?
The...
Because you're not a city entity, you're just a task force, so...
Correct. The concept that has been discussed at our meetings has been that we would recommend the city pass an ordinance to essentially repeal the ordinance that took, that removed the beautification committee, because the city actually had a beautification committee, and that was repealed in 2004. And we would reinstate that committee, and that committee's sole purpose would be to administer the May Award Fund, which is, there's not a lot of detail on what the May Award Fund necessarily specifically is, but from what I understand, it's to help beautify our city. And I really want to put a little more effort into finding out why, you know, that fund was created and give a little credit to May Award. And then, from there, we would, the beautification committee wouldn't just, will look at downtown. It would be a citywide issue. So, in my opinion, and obviously, council would still have to bless all this. This is just conceptual at this point. It would look at things like, do we want to put some more plant or some more beautification in our parks, some more planters, something that looks nice in our parks? Do we want to improve our gateway signage? So when you're coming in to the city of Columbus from all directions, there's a nice sign that says, "Welcome to Columbus." Things like that all over the city. That won't be just downtown-specific, but the fundraising that we would have to do, that would go into the May Award Fund, would then support all the maintenance for that. That is the concept that I have in mind, and that we've discussed at the beautification committee. that we've discussed at the beautification committee, so.
Okay. Trina?
Oh, I just had two questions. The last meeting I was able to attend was, I think, in late, no, it was late November.
November, yeah.
Um, missed the December one. Uh, on the $10,000 donation, are we sure that the whole amount is for the, um, banners? I could have sworn it was a $10,000 donation, half for the banners and half does need it for something else.
Carolyn's dealt with Mr. Groh, so I'll-
Good evening, council. Um, to answer your question, Trina, we were given, typically, HLPC is given $10,000 by the Grohs each year. Um, last year, they gave $10,000. Um, Bob is extremely supportive of the banners downtown. He would really like to see that happen in the city of Columbus. So, $5,000 in 2017 were, was given for the banners. Um, his wife, Janet, is definitely in support of HLPC remodeling the bathrooms in the Rest Haven, so $5,000 was put towards that. Now, they made that the same $10,000 contribution in 18, which five of it Bob wants towards the banners, 5,000 Janet wants towards the Rest Haven Bathroom remodel project. So, between those two years, that's why we have a total of 10,000.
Thank you very much. I was very confused because I was so sure that half of it went to it, but-
Yes, but that, for two different years, they've done that. And, you know, this helping with the downtown beautification and banners is something Bob would like to start with and see done. Um, I feel confident that, um, to answer a little bit of Andy's question in regard to, like, maintenance on those banners and stuff, I'm sure they would be interested in seeing, you know, uh, you know, maintenance done on it and it still looking well. So, I'm, I'm sure that that wouldn't be a problem, you know, with Bob making a donation, making sure everything stays looking good as well. So, that helps answer the question on some of that.
Thank you, Carolyn. That was very helpful. Uh, my other question was on the guidelines. It now says Columbus, the Red Bud City. Uh, last time I was there, it said, uh, what does Columbus mean to you? I like the idea of Columbus, the Red Bud City, being in the actual banners. I just wanted to make sure all red buds weren't sent in.
I'll look, I'll look into that. That's, this is the most current one that I had, so unless something got changed. Um, I know Becky Widener from the workshop's been instrumental in putting this together, so, um, she would know more than me. And I don't want to misspeak, so.
Reagan?
Thanks. So, I just had a couple questions, um, and comments on the, the design contest. Are you envisioning having one overall design winner or multiple designs that would be approved?
I think that's open to debate. Um, I, and, and when I actually got my, uh, just to make sure we had enough money in the budget, I got quotes for a couple different types because, obviously, if you, if you order 35 of the same kind, you're going to get a price break. But if you, you know, so, I, I have that worked into trying to figure out, uh, how much money we're going to spend. So, I, I think it all depends on how-
What you get back.
Correct. I, you know, I anticipate it would be a handful, so, or a couple, two, two to, you know, maybe we get five good ones and we go with five. But I can't imagine it'd be anything more than that. And that's probably extreme, to be honest with you, so.
Sure. Um, and then, at this, maybe partly my ignorance, or it might be a typo, but in the last kind of dash where you're describing the image submissions, the high resolution 300, I think it's supposed to be PPI. It's DPI, so maybe check that.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
That's all I had.
Do you have more, Trina?
Oh, nothing much. Uh, one thing I don't see is, um, uh, mentioning that the wording will likely be the same and just the image in the center would be different.
Yeah. Um, we, we have a design that we picked out, uh, or, that is preferred at this point, and it will, it'll be, uh, a darker background, and then on the title, it'll say, just very simply, "Welcome to Columbus," and then the image will be in the middle. So, it's going to be a simple layout. Um, and Carolyn, I think you were involved with that, were you not? Am I misspeaking? Yeah. Yeah, no, we, we, we have one, and, and before the next meeting, um, I will, I will put that in the packet, too. If that would, that would probably help, yeah.
Yeah, I think, uh, JT, are you on, JD, are you on the task force?
Yes.
I remember that we talked about this banner contest and tourism, and, uh, I'm assuming this is kind of where that evolved out of, so, I don't know. Oh, okay. All right. Um, questions, concerns, thoughts? Mayor Tom?
I like the idea of the banner contest, uh, and I appreciate that you, that you're bringing it to the council to discuss this. The one thing I noticed on here was that it says deadline for entries is December 1st, 2018.
Yeah, that was- Yeah, I, this is an out, yeah. I, I will def, I will, and I will update that for the next packet, too. I'll get, yeah.
All right. Um, aside from-
Because the intent now is March 1st.
Yeah, that's it.
So, if we could, if we could put, put the contest back out on the website and take, we had, what, what the original plan was, basically, take, uh, entries for about a two-month period.
Okay.
And, and with the thought process of, you get the, the, the art entries in, you pick one, and then you can go to print and get them, and then get the banners up sometime early summer, you know, you know, late May, early, early June. So, that, that was the timeframe we were hoping for, so.
Sure. Um, aside from the banner contest, I, I know the comments you had made about the snow, snow ordinance discussion, et cetera. I do think that maybe the council should discuss the formality, I guess, of this group a little bit further because I think that it's maybe been a little, I guess, clumsy, so to speak. Um, I know that you were unavailable to chair a couple of the meetings, uh, due to the, the birth of your son, et cetera. But I think there's a couple of different options that we could do, which would be, you know, by having ordinance on the books and having a beautification committee where there are people appointed for terms, et cetera. Uh, the other thought that I've had as well is just having a subcommittee off of the Tourism Commission or something along those lines, because I believe the Tourism Commission's going to be working on, you know, a branding and a, and a marketing effort as well. So, you kind of want to have those two tied together. Um, but I, I think that the, the comments that I've heard, I guess, I don't want to be negative because I think there's some good productive work happening here, is that it needs to be understood and formalized to a certain degree so everybody understands-
Yeah.
-the, the chain of command or the process, and so that we consider funding donations and things like that. And I agree that the May Award Fund would be a good place where if there were donations, they would be dedicated for one specific purpose. They wouldn't be, you know, put out through the budget in another line item. They would be dedicated for beautification efforts. So, I would, I would like to have a bit more discussion, not at this meeting, but maybe at the next committee of the whole, about making a decision or picking a direction that the council would like to see as far as formalizing that group if it's going to be there.
All right. So, at this point, um, you're looking for us to move this forward to, to get an approval to-
Basically, for the contest.
Just do the contest.
We, we had it out, uh, basically to take submissions. Uh, um, we have, through Civics Plus in our website, uh, we can take online submissions actually pretty easily. They've worked well for, uh, when we had the, um, Business Appreciation Luncheon for the nomination for businesses. I know when we put, uh, the nominations for, uh, appointees to board members, that's all worked well. So, that's what we intended to use. And JT has it set up. Right now, alls we got to do is basically click a button, and it goes live again.
Does anybody have an issue with moving that forward to take a vote on that? Reagan?
Is that something we need to vote on, or can we just give approval?
You can move the contest forward and send the rest back to the count to discuss the beautification committee itself and how you want to handle that.
And I meant the contest, so, yeah. I, I mean, I'd be okay to do that tonight so they can get it going.
So, I guess I'm still not clear what, what you would like us to do, then? Or, do we need to move it forward, or?
Hey, let me ask you this, Paul. So, did, was it the agenda, did we put it properly in the agenda? Is, or is that the big of a deal?
Well, your agenda, all your agenda says is update on the beautification task force. So, there's, there's no, there's no agenda item for approving the contest. I'm not sure you need to have an agenda item to approve a contest. I'm not sure that the beautification task force has the authority to do anything. So, my, my thought is that if you want to keep this nice and clean, you move the contest forward, uh, put it on the agenda for your council meeting next time, get it approved, back your dates up to give you plenty of time after that, and then you're clean.
That work? All right, that's what we'll do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
And I, as I said earlier, I do intend to make sure that, uh, the communication gets better. I know, you know, as I said, or as the mayor said, I missed a few meetings, and I will be the one that will be the conduit, and I'll make sure that after every meeting, I will be at the council to give an update. So, thank you.
And I, I agree with Mayor Tom. I think we should definitely look at, you know, where this task force should be housed, if it's, you know, beautification committee or a subcommittee of, uh, tourism. I mean, I think they're doing great work, so, um, for the most part, this is a good idea for the contest, so. All right, next up, we have number 10, review signage around Columbus Elementary and Middle Schools. I think Patrick, did you take this one? All right.
Yep, thank you, Andy. So, there's a few issues here, um, that I think I, I wanted just to introduce sort of as an FYI. At this point, we may need to come back and talk about some of these things. But, uh, recently, Lieutenant Weiner and I met with the school officials about some of the signage that's, uh, around, uh, the schools, elementary and middle school, um, specifically, and that, um, with their, their, um, adjusted pickup and flow this year, some of the signage is not, uh, relevant, uh, needs to be adjusted, and we're going to need to, um, change ordinances for the, the no parking ones, uh, specifically in the elementary and middle school where we've got specific times laid out for no parking in front of the schools. Um, the, the, um, morning regulations are still needed, but the afternoons are not. Um, a couple of other issues were raised in terms of designated, the handicapped a little bit more clear around the middle school. And there's some, uh, another item I pointed out in the memo was, uh, if you, uh, think of the elementary school in the back of a fountain street, um, it dead ends, and there's a, there's a fence there that segregates the street from the school grounds, and there's some questions about, um, that fence needing to be locked and access, uh, to the school. So, um, Dennis is doing some research here. Um, I wanted to see if there was something related to, um, the reasons that it was designated as a walking route, and that leaves the, the fencing unlocked and also attracts, uh, it as a unofficial drop-off point for some of the students, and that's creating some issues in that area. So, those were the bigger things. Um, Superintendent Dooman also asked about, um, potential parking on West School near the district office, if that would be feasible, and, uh, something that, uh, we want to look at a little bit closer as well. Again, I, I wanted just to, to bring it as an introduction, you know, of things that we're looking at, and, um, I, in my mind, I think we're going to need maybe another committee of the whole with a little bit more detail on some of these, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I'd love to get, like, a overhead map in here to kind of outline all this stuff because there's a lot of changes. And, um, I brought this forward to Patrick before the holidays and wasn't able to make this meeting, but I had been getting questions because the signage is confusing. And when we changed some of the, um, things before the school year started this year, I just don't think that we followed up with ordinance changes or, uh, signage changes with the pickup and drop-off changes that came along with it. And, uh, I mean, if, if the sign says, "Don't park there," the officer could issue a, a parking violation to a vehicle if, if they didn't understand that that's where the school actually wants them to go. So, I think we need to continue working on this. I'm not opposed to any of the proposed changes here. It looks like Dennis is still looking at some of the questions that were out there, too, but I think maybe getting an overhead and kind of identifying where they would like the additional parking spaces, um, and making sure that we can deal with the signage, and also if we need to be painting curbs or anything like that when the snow is gone as well, so.
Yeah, yeah. That's kind of what I had think, had thought as well, so.
Jason?
I just had a question on the three additional parking spaces she wants in that street. I, as of right now, the only safety door is in the front. That's where you're supposed to end at the middle school. So, I don't know why she wants, if they still park there, they should still enter through the front door just for safety, because if they accidentally don't leave that side door, they leave it open and stuff, they should enter through the front door. So, I don't know why she wants them parked all the way over there.
Yeah, I, it was explained just like the, to do school business, you know, for visitors to the district office. I often have to go there for meetings, but, um, something to, to, to bring out as we look at this a little bit further.
Just on that point, I think the, this was something that was requested by the district, um, maybe a year ago or more, and it was more for district office visitor parking, not necessarily for parents doing drop-off pickup of students. Yeah. Right. Yeah. Well, I think, so I've had meetings at the district office, too, and they have a district office entrance, which is monitored, but it's not the front of the middle school, which is where they want the student drop-off pickup with the, the alarm or the, the entry, uh, cameras.
But I think it would be beneficial to have Annette or a representative or Troy or someone here when we continue to discuss, discuss this, too, because I think there's been a lot of changes with school safety concerns, et cetera, and where you want to try to route traffic. So, I think having someone here to kind of help us with those issues. We don't want to bring too much parking into an area where maybe it should be restricted for safety reasons as well, so.
Yeah, yep.
If we can get, uh, more updates and information and some photography or something for the next discussion, I think that would be helpful.
For sure, yep.
All right, any other questions for Patrick or anything on this issue? All right. Thank you. Uh, next up, number 11, Resolution 26-18, creating municipal court fund. Uh, this would be a fund to establish, uh, set up and creation of individual funds and their activity for revenues and expenditures for that, uh, purpose of the municipal court. I don't know if Kim has more to, to add. We gotta have a, gotta have a place to put the money.
It really is a matter of housekeeping because the fund was created when we adopted the budget. Gatsby requires that we recognize it through resolution, and it's pretty much like Andy said, it, it restricts all the activity for that particular fund within that fund, and it keeps all of the undesignated fund balance and anything else within it, within that specific fund's activity. So, it's, it really is housekeeping.
All right. Questions for Kim? Mike?
I do have a question. Um, so, we're creating the fund, um, and we are essentially financing the starter, the, the starting fund for the court. What do we have to do to formalize how that, that money gets paid back to the city once the court is standing on its own? Because, you know, we had an agreement with the joint court where there was shared revenue that kind of went to every entity, but I don't believe we've discussed that much in the creation of this court, because if it's going to be a standalone impartial court, it's going to be surviving on its own revenue hopefully someday. But is there an agreement or something that we have to adopt before that court is actually created to repay ourselves, or how is this going to work?
No, simply by recognizing and adopting this resolution, any, any activities, revenues or expenses associated with municipal court will run directly through that fund. So, any fines, forfeiture, money that we get going forward from January 1st will automatically funnel into this account to help with the startup of the new municipal- will automatically funnel into this account to help with the startup of the new municipal court.
That fund, will that fund ultimately become part of the court though at some time? That it won't be a city budgeted fund after?
It will always be a city budgeted fund because it's the police department that, it's, it's a blend. The municipal judge is an elected official of the city. The municipal court clerk's going to be an employee of the city. The activity that generates the fines and forfeitures is done through the police department. So it will always be a part of the city's financial package, so to speak. It'll always be one of the, the 21, I think we're up to, funds that we manage or that we adopt budgets for every year.
Will that fund be controlled by the court once it's created? The clerk of courts would be?
You know, tech, I've worked in other communities where there have been municipal courts and the municipal judge and municipal court clerk act just like department heads and set their budgets, recognizing what they need to operate their specific department. The council ultimately though, has the ability to adopt that budget or recommend modifications to it. But it really becomes almost like another department.
Paul, do you have any concerns or comments about that?
Not yet.
Okay.
I can understand that it's different from the joint court because there were so many municipalities involved in it, but it's just the getting it started and then having it become a standalone and impartial court away from the city. I just didn't, we hadn't talked a lot about the financial part of it when we created the court, I guess, so.
The bigger issue will be making sure that we keep the actual forfeitures under control with the part that stays with the city, the part that goes to the county, the part that goes to the state.
Okay.
Or not to the county, but to the state. So that's an issue for a different day.
Okay.
Yeah, that should be done by the court clerk clearly with her reporting.
Any other questions on this? We can move it forward. All right. We'll move that forward, thank you. Uh, next up I have, excuse me, number 12, resolution 27-18, APC sewer utility abandonment. This was, apparently there's a drain pipe that goes under American Packaging and it's no longer used, right? Who's, who wants to tell me more about this?
Jason maybe have more of the technical, but I think you kind of keep.
And now it's not being used, so we don't.
Right.
Well, Paul and I did rock, paper, scissors and I told him he could handle this one, but here I am. So, um, so there's a, there historically has been a gravity sanitary sewer that ran from the kind of Sunset Hibbert neighborhood, if you will. Chapin Streets kind of gathered that whole area between decks and then the sewage would come down and essentially out Maple and then run under James, down Blackhawk, under APC's building, right under the middle of their building, uh, back into where the railroad tracks is. And then it eventually gets down to Lewis Street and comes back out to James Street. Don't ask me why, I wasn't here. But when we embarked on the James Street project and the redesign of the sewer, we realized that that wasn't in anybody's best interest to have all the city's sewage running in a pipe underneath APC's building. So we, we redesigned the gravity sewer to reroute all of that down to our lift station, pump it back up the hill, so now it doesn't leave James Street. It, once it gets there, it, it goes down and gets pumped back up. But logistically, that sewer doesn't convey the city's sewage underneath the building anymore. So this has been something that goes back 10 years that's been talked about on the city staff level. As a result, what we decided to do was abandon that line in at Blackhawk Drive, but yet the sewer remains underneath the building. It doesn't convey anything from the city, there's nothing hooked up to it, but APC does use it because they have connections to the sewer under the building. So at one point, and we've talked about this several times in staff, after the James Street project was done, we said, we got to circle back on this and make sure that we talk to APC because it was my recommendation, the city's best interest, to basically give everything on APC's property to them and say, this is your sewer, this is your lateral, this is to maintain. If anything fails, if anything happens in the future, there, there's no responsibility of the city here. And, you know, simply because it wasn't even an easement from, for starters, but it, you know, it was in existence there. So we've been working with APC staff and once the sewer was abandoned in 2017 with the James Street project and nothing was going through it anymore, we, we put together some documentation. Paul was kind enough to prepare that. We put together some maps. Uh, we went to APC, we had this discussion. They had known about this ahead of time and that was the ultimate goal, was to reroute the sewer. And so that kind of gets us to today where we, we've kind of, although it's a little after the fact, we're still trying to kind of close the loop here and make it official. Because, you know, my point was, you know, we understand this and the people at APC right now understand this, but, you know, 20 years from now or something, you know, and there's an issue, uh, there's going to be questions asked and we certainly don't want it to be a responsibility of the city since the city has no interest in that line anymore and it solely serves APC at this point. So I guess with that, I'll give it to Paul if there's anything he wants to add.
I would never have been that technical. But no, I have nothing to add.
It's exactly what I said, so.
Okay, any questions for Jason or Paul?
Thanks for cleaning it up, I guess.
Literally. All right, we'll move that forward then. Uh, next up, number 13, review and consider agreement with Summit Court for snow plowing operations. There was a note in the memo in our packet. Basically, you know, Public Works is, you know, partnering essentially with this, this contractor to snow, plow the snow on Summit Court because their trucks are too big to get in there. So they're gonna plow it out and shove it out into a certain spot that the city will collect it. Patrick, did you have more to add to that?
That's pretty much the nuts and bolts of it. We've been, uh, we've been doing this for a couple of years now with DPW. Kind of, it kind of helps each other out because the cul-de-sac is long and narrow. Uh, they are allowed to, to take care of the cleaning, gets it to a central pile and then DPW will carry the, the snow away.
The question I had, I guess, was, um, this particular contractor, is he the person that does the plowing for the condos?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, that makes sense.
It's, it's a different contractor from, had been in the past, but, um, uh, sat down with the condo association leader and the contractor just to go over this. And so we're all on the same page.
Okay. Mayor Tony?
Has any of the language in the contract changed from previous years or is it the same agreement that we've always had?
Just the, the dates.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, I mean, makes sense. I mean, Iowa's would think we should go to bid for any services, but if this is the person that's already doing the work for them, it wouldn't make sense to do that, so. Oh, right, that too. That makes sense. Okay. We'll move that forward unless there's any objection. All right. Next up, number 14, municipal court update. Uh, I don't know who wants to take that one. Paul, Patrick?
Well, mine's easy. I have, uh, I have nothing to add at this time. I spoke with the state court representative that we've been working with and she's aware that ordinance has been passed and she's aware that we have our election properly posted for the judge position. And she's aware that we now have a lot of work to do between now and May. So please get your committee appointed.
Anybody else have anything else, Mike?
I won't be asking people if they want to participate, I'll just be appointing them, so.
Well, thanks for that. Okay. Thank you for the update. Uh, next up, number 15, review of job description, media specialist. And I'll let Patrick explain this.
Okay. Uh, we learned a lot last year about, um, you know, how the city can communicate, provide information, promote itself, lots of the different realms of, of sharing information with the community. And we, we had essentially two individuals that headed that up, the community outreach coordinator and Jesse, our contractor. Using, you know, the, the, the time to produce some of the content, the, the needs we, we have understood with the website, social media, working through the policies. I believe that we can be best served by hiring a media specialist, be, you know, one person taking care of essentially those responsibilities for communicating, getting production out, coordinating and heading up filming of the meetings. I think that this is the way to go. As I said at the beginning, we learned a lot about, you know, the timing needed and we can use that and, and be more efficient and more effective in, in those efforts. So the job description has been provided in the packet. It's, uh, it's borrowed a lot from what we've learned, borrowed from other communities who do some similar things. So that's what direction that I'm asking the council to look at and consider going.
Thank you. One question I had was on the, um, and I think we talked about this once before, but the title of the, the job title, media specialist. Is that, I don't really feel if that, I really don't know if that's, um, you know, strong enough of a title to attract maybe exactly what we're looking for in the position. But you, so you got that title based off like maybe other communities were doing?
Yeah, I mean, not every community had that, some did. I, I, I'm not married to the, to the title and open to it, but open to something better if we can affix that to the position.
I don't know, it just seems like maybe a coordinator or media coordinator, I don't know. We can talk about it more at some point. I just, I just want to make sure we're attracting the right candidate for the job. Mike?
I was going to ask you which of the two words you wanted to change and you must be the specialist.
Yeah.
The media thing you think is appropriate? Because we had talked about technology or media and technology.
I was thinking either media, marketing or technology. Because really it's, it's going to be a blend of all three of those things, so. I don't, yeah, I guess the, the second, the specialist. It's, it kind of sounds entry level. And this is a little more than an entry level job, you know? We're looking for a candidate that will be specialized in this. The other, the other thing that I, I, I thought of is, I didn't, unless I missed it, I didn't see anything that we're, you know, I think we had talked about, we're looking for someone that maybe had city government experience or along those lines. But when I looked through, I didn't notice it, but it might be there.
On your desired minimum qualifications.
Was that on a different page?
It's the second page, kind of at the bottom.
I did turn the page when I looked at it.
Understanding of work in a public sector environment.
Which section?
Right here. Right above special requirements.
Am I on the wrong page? Oh, okay, public, all right, see. Well, thank you guys. Okay. Well, then that concern is, uh, no worries. Uh, Trina?
Oh, no, I'm just agreeing with you, Andy. I would like to see the title extended. I mean, if it's just, um, media and marketing, something like that. Just to give a broader base. But I'm not exactly sure of the exact title at this moment.
Yeah, and I, and I know Patrick has resources. He can reach out to other communities and if, if, if necessary.
Yeah, yeah, could certainly take in what you've suggested here and put something else together that reflects what we've discussed here.
Mayor Tony?
One other thing, and I don't know if it's just redundant, but I think that the general purpose and essential duties is pretty clear and addresses everything that we've discussed. But under tools and equipment used, used, to me, that seems very archaic. Phone system, mainframe, computer terminal, it sounds like 1975. I think there is some very specific tools and equipment that will be used in this position. You know, social media, I mean, if you don't have an understanding of technology and the equipment that's used there, uh, the equipment that's in the room that Jesse's working in, that's very, um, s- specific equipment. And I think that we just maybe need to kind of add a little bit more detail in there so it reflects more of a modern media technology kind of.
Yeah.
Position. So then, you know, I, I don't know. It, to me, those, those terms just seem pretty, pretty dated. So maybe updating those a little bit would help too.
Yeah.
The facsimile machine isn't on here, so they did some.
A wire recorder, eight-track player.
Morse code. Yeah.
I think that might help.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, I like that too. The other thing that stuck out to me on this was the, under essential duties and responsibilities was laying out the percentages of time. I don't really like that. I don't, you don't know that your job is going to be 20% filming and producing and broadcasting and you don't, I mean, it's hard to say, like, to really nail that down, but I don't. I don't know if that's just, just maybe a way to attract someone. It's like, okay, I'm not just doing this all the time, I'm doing this stuff too.
It, it's a way, I mean, these aren't going to be held firm, but it gives, it's a way to give the person a, an understanding of, you know, how the time is expected to be balanced. But I've seen it both ways with, with that breakdown and without.
I don't have a strong opinion, I just don't like it. I mean, I'd be persuaded the other way, you know, but, I mean.
I like the approximation.
Okay. Well, Trina sold me. All right. I don't have anything else right now. I think definitely we should, you know, put this back on the cowl again one more time if we have, if we can. I don't know what timing, if we have timing issues.
I think I'd like to see us move to, to recruit someone as soon as we can, um, but.
Okay. So my, so we've, um, because we have a contract now that is, will now have an expiration date.
Yeah.
What was that date?
Uh, the 27th of January.
Okay. Okay. So at the very least tonight, maybe you, you'd want us to move forward to the next regular meeting?
And it doesn't?
Or do you need us to?
No, I, I was, I was thinking if we follow the normal and, and go to the regular meeting, we, we would be okay.
Because we're approving this position and its duties and job, okay. Yeah, I, maybe bring it to the regular meeting with those, with some adjustments to, maybe to the title, some suggestions or talk to the mayor or I don't.
Well, I, yeah, I think what the, it's minimal changes really is and we can still tweak that before we adopt it at the next regular meeting too, if we need to discuss it a little bit further, just to keep it on track.
Okay. I'm fine with that. Anybody have any concerns with that? Moving it forward, all right. Okay. We'll move that forward for further review and a vote. All right. So next up, we're going to have, um, it looks like two, three, four, or maybe five. One, two, three, four, five closed sessions. Uh, I don't think we'll be taking any action out of any of them, would we? Possibly.
They are noticed with possible action.
Okay.
Some of them are.
Well, we will convene into closed session with the potential to come out of closed session for action. Uh, next up I have number 16, convene to closed session pursuant to state statute 19.85, sub 1, sub G, conferring with legal counsel for. sub 1, sub G, conferring with legal counsel for governmental, for the governmental body who is rendering oral written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation which is or is likely to become involved. I would need a motion to go into closed session. Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to go into closed session as I read. Pat, if you could please take a roll call.
Hendrickson?
Aye.
Reed? Tylin? Tome?
Aye.
Traxler?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Alright, we are now in closed session.